Okay, everybody, it's 5:30. We're going to start an informational session. We have two pieces or two parts tonight. The first one will be regarding public comment. And City Clerk Monica Hennessy-Mohan will be going through that for us.
All right. Well, thank you and good evening. I did hand out to the council, and there is a couple sets over there for the media, some documents that I've put together for you to consider. The first is just kind of an outline of what I'll be talking about. The second set is section from the League of Minnesota Cities Information Memo on Meetings of Council, and it starts with the rules of order and audience participation. The second handout is a section from the Minnesota Mayors Association and its information on citizen input. And the next handout is just a little summary of a survey I did on various cities and what they are currently doing with public comment. So I think we'll just go through the outline that's titled Public Comment in Open Forum. And what we looked for are parameters that you should consider in setting up a policy and procedures should you desire to implement a public comment forum. So first thing you need to look at is, do you want to limit the amount of time per meeting? Most of the cities do have a limit of 15 to 20 minutes per meeting. The second one is limiting the time per speaker. Most of the cities are around three to four minutes per person. Most of the cities do limit the topic to only issues that are not on the agenda. And most cities do request that you sign up before the meeting begins so that you can, the mayor or I would call on those people in the order that they signed up. And if there is more time available, others can go to the microphone if time permits. You also have the option of when do you want to schedule the session? Could be either before the meeting, after the meeting, or during the meeting. I looked at the number of information sessions that we currently hold during the year, and it's around 20, so almost every meeting. So if you were to do it before the meeting, obviously that would push back or push up the start time for these sessions. So we're suggesting that we try it out during the meeting to start. If no one appears, you can move on with the rest of the agenda. If you were to do it before the meeting starts, say from 6:00 to 6:15, you would need to have that time available for the public. And then during the meeting, you can put it on the calendar or on the schedule wherever you think fits best. Most of the cities do have it near the beginning of the meeting, shortly after the roll call and the call to order. We are recommending at first to have all the public comment be in person. If you want to allow public comment via telephone or Zoom, we would need to look at some equipment and staffing requirements to allow for that. And then just minimal things, you would need to designate a timekeeper, and we would need to figure out what type of timer would be visible to both the council and the public. I think Chris Hood is on the line also, but I thought it would be helpful to talk through these parameters before we draft the policy. We do have good samples from cities like Rochester and Eden Prairie, and I don't think drafting the procedures will take us much time. And do you have any comments?
If I could, I have a question. Does it impact, is, what considerations should we think of having it before the meeting versus during the meeting?
So if it's before the meeting, you would need to push up the time of all your pre-council so that you're done by 6:00 PM.
I really mean-
And then you have a time gap there that if no one appears, you can't, well, you're technically present, so you can't talk any city business and-
Right. I didn't mean so much the time. I meant are there other, you know, legal considerations that we need to think about having it part of our meeting versus before the meeting? Maybe I'm making too big of a deal.
I would say it's not so much a legal consideration because cities are doing it both ways. It's a matter of how do you think you'd get the best input from the public?
Yeah.
So you may have some residents who would feel intimidated coming to the mic and being on camera, and it's, you know, it's a formal setting. You might have other residents who feel more comfortable if you had it in the Winona Room. We would still need to consider it an open meeting or a public meeting of council, so there would be roll call, and we would have some record of the meeting.
That more answers my question. Thank you for the reminder. It's a public meeting, it's an open meeting, it's posted. That's what I was trying to assimilate in my brain.
Monica, if I might, and maybe perhaps, as you mentioned, Chris Hood could answer this better. I don't mean to put Chris on the spot, but to your question, Steve, one of the things that we've talked to staff level as regards to potential legal issues is it's actually the idea of the discussion of something that is not on the agenda. And maybe the easier way to think of that, and again, Chris, please jump in if I don't fully represent this correctly. Let's say you had a public hearing tonight, as an example, and you might be serving in a role of a quasi judicial form. And someone came to the public comment period, and during the public comment period before the meeting started to discuss that zoning issue, in a sense, that's testimony that you may be hearing that evening. And so that's more of the, to your point about the legal question, I think that we should consider, so that it's really also then tied to that issue of not on the agenda this evening.
Can you just give a couple examples of what quasi judicial items would be?
And again, Chris is on the line, maybe he can help me out. I mean, I can think of the zoning issue, or, you know, we had a sign request-
For an appeal of a-
Appeal of a Board of Adjustments decision. And again, Chris, sorry to dive right in. If you could help out, that'd be great.
Sure, Mayor and Council, good evening. I think City Administrator will kind of hit on the, kind of the big ones, but you can run into a quasi judicial proceeding, and that would be any time where the council is sitting as basically as a judge determining certain criteria based on facts and evidence. So it might be related to, you know, a liquor license violation where you had something come before you there. It may be related to an approval or an appeal associated with, you know, a variance request, conditional use permit. In most cases, they come in the form of land use decisions, so an appeal from the Heritage Preservation Commission related to a certificate of appropriateness would be another example where you would, where you'd run into that. You know, the, you know, with the public comment period, the, you know, again, if you set your rules or procedures, and let's say one of those rules is that items on the agenda that evening are not part of the public comment period. Obviously, if someone comes to the public comment period and wants to speak about things that are on the agenda for that evening, you as mayor, you would have to instruct that person that, you know, they're going to have to appear at that time for the public hearing and that you're not going to take public comments at that time or during the public comment period. They will have to appear during the actual meeting and give their comments at the appropriate time.
Thanks, Chris. Eileen and Pam, you each had something?
Just thank you for putting all this together, Monica. This is really helpful. I, I think that it, I think that it would be beneficial to us and also the community if we had this, if we added public comment before or either at the beginning of our meeting or before. I saw there were a couple that did it after the meeting. I know that's an option, but just because the ending time of our meetings is so variable, and we want something that community members can dependably, that, you know, all of our council meetings start at 6:30 currently, so if we added this, it would be, I think it would be best to have it, you know, 6:00 or 6:30 at the top of our meeting. But I'm seeing a lot of other cities do a three-minute limit for folks. And just being a little, the way that I am, that would make me want us to do a 15-minute session, because if you had people speaking exactly three minutes, then you could fit five in. But that's, I also think that would help us as far as if we were to put this before our meeting started, say at like 6:00, or right at the top of our meeting, we would, it would be a time that's easy for people to remember when they should show up. So I'm really interested in something we can do consistently that's easy for folks to remember, and they always know when it's happening. But, you know, it's good to see that there are so many other cities around us that are doing this and easy model for us to follow.
Thanks, Eileen. Pam?
I too would favor before the meeting. But I'm, I'm thinking of people who may work and may not be able to quite get here early enough to show up 30 minutes before the meeting begins in order to sign up. So that might be, we might think of adjusting that a little bit, 15 minutes before the meeting starts.
I think we could probably also do an online form to some degree. So then we could, you know, instead of handwriting it, people could submit them while they're at work, kind of thing. I don't know.
There. And also, I'd suggest that we have people identify what they're going to talk about, just basically.
That would, that would be a requirement.
Okay. So then we can weed out the people that are going to speak to issues that are on the agenda that night.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I certainly agree with Eileen. I would be for the public comment before the meeting, just a suggestion, 6:10 to 6:25, just a suggestion. We had public comment before, as I mentioned a few times, and we had it, I think, like 6:15 to 6:30. People just came, spoke. We didn't have a lot of people come. I think, you know, putting on a lot of parameters, I don't think we need to do that as far as topics, what they can talk about, because mayor, you will have total control of that period, and you can tell someone whether they can speak on this or not. But I would totally support doing it before the meeting.
Okay. My, my personal opinion is during the meeting, shortly after we, we start. Reason being, again, people trying to get off work and trying to get over here. Also, it creates, you know, in my, like, if we don't have anybody show up, then we can just get straight into the agenda items. Whereas if we're here early at, let's say, you know, council's here, staff is here at 6:00, and we're just literally sitting here dead air for a half an hour because nobody signed up that day or whatever, that would be my concern, is that we're wasting a lot of people's time at that point. But, you know, I guess the, I like 15 minutes. I like three minutes. I think if someone is succinct and efficient in the way that they're presenting, they should be able to get the gist of what they're, they're trying to say out in those three minutes. The, but yeah, I kind of, I do prefer it, I think, you know, after we open the meeting. That would be my, my choice, but I'm open to whatever. Pam?
I would agree with that in that there would be just one beginning to the meeting. So we would, one roll call, you know, one beginning to the meeting.
And then also-
Go right on.
Yeah, we wouldn't be compressing information sessions beforehand, potentially, so.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If this was done before the meeting, we would not need a roll call, would you? Because the meeting is not in session.
Correct.
You know, so where does the roll call come into it?
As soon as we start our meeting at 6:30?
When we start the meeting, yes. But if we have a public comment or informational session like we do like tonight and other times, you know, we just, what's here is we start the meeting and go, and then the official roll call is taken then when the meeting starts.
Mm-hmm. Eileen?
I don't, I see the merits of both options. I think that including the public forum as part of our meeting encourages city council members to be present. I think there could be, not this council, but there may be a time where there's a public forum regularly scheduled as part of our meetings, and because it's not part of the official meeting, there may be a world in which some council members don't feel like they need to show up, and then later they can say, well, I didn't hear that. So I think just for transparency sake, for being good representatives, I would love it to be included as, as part of the meeting, just so that we have accountability on our parts. And I know one of the questions that we, was raised when we brought this up a month or so ago was, were concerns about violent language or things like that. And I just wondered, Monica, if there were any, as you were looking through these, are, do some of these cities have, you know, one of the officers show up during the public comment just to be on hand in case someone gets upset, and then, and then they can go when the public forum's over? Or is, is that overkill? I don't want to, I think that, you know, having clear rules about how this works is a really good guideline, but if folks do have safety concerns, I don't, I don't want that to get lost in the shuffle.
I would note, the City of Bloomington just changed their process at their last meeting. It used to be during their session, their regular council meeting, and they are now holding their public forums before the council meeting in a separate room so that it is not on camera. And part of it was because the conversation between, well, at these, at public comments was getting a little out of hand. So they felt people would feel less attacked if they made a comment that others disagreed with, it wouldn't be on camera. But, I mean, cities have different approaches in how they handle security. I didn't get into a lot of detail with that. That's more in Tom's world.
It was just something I thought about.
One thing that I guess I would like to see is, at some point, I would like to see us allow phone calls or Zoom, again, accessibility, transparency, people not being able to get home from work in time, that kind of thing. I think, you know, if there's any opportunity there to try and make it more open for the public to submit input, I think that would be something that I would look, like to look at. Pam?
Mayor, I think we should, we should start out with that.
Sure.
What if, you know, somebody comes home from work, but they can't immediately leave their kids again?
Yeah.
You know, there's, I think, I think that would be, it would be good just to start out with that technology in place.
Okay. Yeah, we do it for council meeting anyways, so.
Right. So I'm, can you clarify to start with the Zoom? I just mean, as we, as we set this up and start adopting this, this public forum-
I'd like to see that right away.
Right. I want to see the Zoom available right away. Okay. There will likely be additional costs for both staff and, not so much the, the equipment for Zoom, but for, if you want to do telephone, there would be, we would need to have a conference phone in this room and some wiring, probably. Not everyone has, if you want to limit it to Zoom, you could.
If we did it during the meeting, would there be any additional cost then? Because we'd already be running Zoom for a council meeting anyways.
So Mayor and Council, I think one of the things that we haven't fully discussed coming out of the pandemic is the Zoom capabilities are beneficial in many ways, but there is a cost to have staff here, and it's not something that's been necessarily budgeted, because by name, you know, Brad has a lot of duties in the City of Winona. And for him to be here, it's, you know, flex time, overtime. If he flexes his time, that, that's still a cost to the city. So we are looking at other options for staffing these Zoom meetings. And again, it may seem easy, like, oh, you just, you put Zoom on, but I think maybe some of the things we haven't discussed related to that, though, is it's related to the HBC technology. It's, if we really truly want to monitor comments through Zoom, then you really do need to have someone sitting there monitoring it because we're listening. And there's some costs to that, and so that, we need to make you aware of that. And if you, if the council wishes to have Zoom be available, and we need to bring those costs back to you, what those are.
Mr. Mayor, how many staff people does it, if I could ask Chad, how many staff people does it take to, to run a Zoom? How many staff people does it?
You know, my question. It really is, it's, it's one or really, in a sense, two. And that's what we need to discuss further, because again, there's the HBC component to this. Now, we have someone that comes from HBC. So there's really two people on what we call the technical side of making sure the broadcast goes out to the public. And again, there's costs associated with that. And again, Monica has alluded to this. I guess we don't want to limit for any of those folks that don't know the technology of Zoom, and they say, well, where's, can I call in? We would literally have to wire a conference phone into this, into this room.
I think as far as our Zoom and personnel costs for running this, I think it's worthwhile. I think that, you know, this is about community members being heard, and it's their city, and we work for them. And I think that in the grand scheme of things, increasing accessibility is never a bad investment. I will say, though, that because Zoom does have a call-in option that can be done from pretty much any phone, I would be in favor of only having Zoom and not having like a conference phone setup.
Sure.
I think, too, we also would need to be really clear amongst ourselves and with the public about who gets to speak first between people who show up in the internet and people who show up in person. So does everyone sign up before they get here? Is there an online sign up and a physical one that gets dicey? But just, that's a logistical piece I think we'd have to figure out, and I don't know the answer to it.
Oh, Steve, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, are these, let's say we didn't have Zoom. Are these recorded anyway and archived?
Yes.
So there's a, there's a-
We are currently web streaming them, and so you can access that video online any, any time after the meeting.
So there's a record of the meeting, even if we weren't, pre, pre-pandemic, pre-Zoom? Just trying to make sure I understand that. And so do we have technician, do we have technicians doing that, or is that just magic and automatic, or?
Which part?
So, okay, so we have, we have, we have, we have a technician here, we have somebody from HBC.
So Brad runs the Zoom.
Okay.
I run the web stream.
Oh.
We have a camera person in there who runs the cable broadcast, which goes out to both Charter and HBC. So both cable companies get the same fee.
So pre-pandemic, those two-
Pre-pandemic, we only had cable TV. We added Zoom during pandemic. We added web streaming. That was in process before the pandemic. If we didn't continue Zoom, we would still do the web stream.
And that would be saved and archived and uploaded? Okay. So there's a record of the meeting? Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, just a quick comment, because I don't want to leave the security issue just flat. We may, in the future, need to go, and again, I'll defer to Chris here, but I think we may in the future need to go into a closed session, and I believe we're allowed to do that, to talk about security. I would not recommend that we have any security staff during the public comment period, but I do believe that we need rules that are very clear for inappropriate behavior. And then the last piece of that is, I think with this process, to Eileen's point, the staff may be required to go over some of the procedures if it becomes unruly, or if we feel that the environment is not safe. What, what is, what is the procedure for council? And that, we'll make sure that that's, as, as part of the rules and procedures, what we can release publicly. Now, again, that's because it's obviously security reasons. We don't want all of that necessarily broadcast, but Monica and I, just for the record, did talk about security through this, through this process.
George?
I just want to say, now, Monica, you put a lot of work into getting this material to us tonight, and as we move forward, forward with this, this is going to bring more work, of course, for your office. Not to put you on the spot, but what would you like to see? Because the work is going to come down on you.
She'd like to see an intern.
I will do whatever the council thinks is in the best interest of the council and the residents. I mean, we, we can do it. All the alternates that I presented are feasible, and it's truly your discretion how you would like to see the comments coming in. I mean, it's, it's additional work, but we can handle that.
And just to let the people know that there's still seven of us that you can still call every day with whatever concern you may have, that you may not want to discuss it publicly, because I don't want to see two neighbors come up and get into it.
All right. So just to wrap this up, I think everybody's got their opinions out on the table here. We don't have two council members here, and obviously their opinions are important as well. What are next steps for this?
So I think we have enough feedback to be able to draft the policy and procedures. We'd bring that back to a future council meeting for you to adopt, and then we would implement it after that. The policy and procedures, we'd also include the signup form and what format that would Chris, anything else to add?
No, I think that covers it.
Thanks, Chris. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Very good. We'll move on to the second portion of our informational session regarding body worn cameras. And we've got Chief Williams.
Chief, you only got six minutes.
Yeah. Three minutes.
Four minutes longer than I planned. Mayor and Council, being cognizant of the time, we do have three individuals from Body Worn Cameras Utility and Associates who have joined us via the Zoom to answer any questions that you may have as it relates to the equipment. But first of all, what I want to do is just kind of back up and just do a brief overview or review of how we ended up getting to this point in time. As I have mentioned at other meetings in the past, our current in-car video system is out of warranty. They will not support it anymore. We've actually had to send cameras in that they will no longer repair, and then we've And then we've ended up having to purchase those as new. So we knew the day was coming and we started planning for a replacement of that system on the in car system. And it only made sense um as the discussions about body worn camera expanded across. The United States and Minnesota and actually locally Winona with Winona County Sheriff's Department. We thought that it was the opportune time to be looking at the body worn cameras as well. Uh, so we started researching the platforms that we uh were available to us and um looked at uh. We asked for input from seven different vendors for the officers to basically do a test and evaluation on. And uh six vendors responded to us and provided input to us and let us look at their equipment. As part of that process, we uh had one officer from each one of our shifts, our patrol division. The night shift officer, afternoon shift officer, day shift officer, and then had an investigator and also evidence. Person there and then a, a couple of administrators and uh asked for these to be done throughout the uh. Throughout the summer of last year. Um, ultimately, the officers looked at the equipment, they looked at the uh ease of use. They looked at the in car video system as well. Uh, they rank ordered the six vendors that we looked at. And uh the, the body worn came out as number one, uh, as the choice for the police officers. Um, entered into a discussion with uh, with body worn and we're able to get quote from them. Um, we have three individuals from body worn that have joined us via Zoom. Uh, Brian Churchill is uh my point of contact, has been my point of contact in terms of the sale. And uh the pricing and any questions that I've had in terms of the uh actual uh contract language itself. And then uh Brian asked two other individuals from utility to join him. Uh, one would be the, on the technical side. So if you want to try and stump him, uh, please feel free to go ahead. And then uh he has another individual who's been with the company significant period of time for product and that would be able to answer any questions to that. Um, I did bring um a sample of the uniform itself, because this is one of the things that the officers really liked. About the system and Brian will tout uh the importance of it and probably the difference that uh utility has above other vendors. Um, but this is just an external vest carrier that actually has the camera in it. And I don't know how easy it is for you to see, but uh if you look in the center, there is a uh camera hole. That's actually fabricated into the uniform itself. Uh, there is a zipper that's located along the side that allows the officer access to then pull the camera out. And you'll notice it looks exactly like a cell phone. And then there is a mounting uh. Bracket in there that that actually, this will fasten in the inside of the uniform. And then the camera slides in and then allows the camera itself to come through the uniform. So you can tell by looking at it externally, uh, that camera is not accessible. To somebody to grab and pull off. If you would happen to get into a, a wrestling match with somebody. Uh, it will stay on, it will be within the inside of the confines of your uniform. And we think it looks extremely professional because you don't have another item hanging off the front of your uniform. It's also smaller and lightweight than the majority of a lot of the cameras that are out there. Um, so. That being said, at the, on the physical aspect of it, uh, the, the background of it, that I, I will turn that over to Brian. To let Brian uh kind of give you the overview of utility associates and the body worn camera. And then if you have questions to ask of him of the actual system, be it the body worn system or the in car camera, um, please feel free to, to ask them. Brian, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and Chief Williams. I uh appreciate the opportunity to be here and I, I hope you can hear and see me. My internet connection for some reason was unstable during the portion of your presentation there, chief. So. Can you hear me and see me?
We got you now.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, again, thank you. And, and I tell you from uh, uh, my own perspective, I'm a former chief of police and I have. Admired and appreciated the amount of hard work that uh the Winona Chief, Police Chief has put into this project. I know uh he is personally vested in it and has been on top of this ever since I stepped in and became his point of contact. So been very impressed with him. I, he's got the technical aspects down. He knows what the, what the camera can and can't do from a police officer perspective. But I'd like to get into what uh the cameras can and can't do from a community perspective. Because uh members of the city council are there to represent your city, your community, uh, expectations from your population. And uh formerly I am retired from the Indianapolis Police Department. I was executive officer for the Community Engagement Office. So I had quite, quite a few opportunities to engage the public on what they expected from their officers. And I would say number one, and it's a very important thing that we do that happened, that a lot of other vendors can't do is. Because of our video camera being mounted inside the uniform, it doesn't come off. Uh, with Axon, with WatchGuard, the other vendors, their cameras are mounted externally on their uniform and. If you get in a fight, you get in a wrestling match, uh, you rip your seatbelt off quickly. Uh, I've even talked to the chief last week, he was just walking through the door of his office. The camera got caught, got ripped off his uniform. My own personal experience as chief of police. On Thanksgiving Day, trying to feed the homeless, I encountered a homeless man that was uh high on, on a narcotic substance. He was causing a disturbance and when I engaged him, the first thing he did was look down at my body camera. That was ex mounted on the exterior of my uniform, ripped it off me and threw it across the street. So immediately I had no video. What communities across our country expect today from police officers when they have body cameras is that there will be video available. Of any critical incident when that incident happens. There's several high profile. Incidents that have happened in the past couple of years, Atlanta and Minneapolis being two of those where officers' body cameras during a struggle have come off. And the result of that have not been good for the community. Because the ability to tell the entire story of what happened during that incident is no longer there. If your body camera's off of your body and on the ground filming the street light. The police department can't tell its side of the story. The community, the community can't get satisfaction that they know the whole story. And problems result from that. And I think we all can understand what, what those problems can be. Number two, it's about accountability for your police officers. We have several ways, uh, we call them triggers of turning body cameras on for officers. It's called automation. With other cameras, you have to push a button to turn that camera on. And a police officer in a critical incident or a high stress incident, or just being human. Can forget and will forget to activate a button to turn a camera on when something's happening. With our system. If I get dispatched on a radio run based on the chief's policy, say I'm dispatched on a robbery in progress. By the chief's policy, the simple fact that I as an officer have been dispatched on a robbery in progress. The computer system will turn my camera on for me. If I turn on my light bar. In the police car and then open my car door, the computer will turn the camera on for me. Because it is a modified former cell phone, you can't make a phone call or, or text on it anymore, but it's running our operating system. But it is a smartphone. It does have a computer in it. If I get out of the car and take off running. It will turn the camera on for me. If I get apprehension of this suspect and we start wrestling because of the gyroscope in the camera. It will turn on for me. With our holster sensors, if I pull my gun out of the holster, it will turn that camera on for me. All of those redundancies mean that I as a human being or under stress have never had to think about activating that camera. It's fail safe. That way, when the complaint is made by the community or when that case goes to court. Or when the media asks for information on that video, the video is available. The officer's not held accountable or, or found guilty of negligence because they failed to turn the camera on it for text both the community and the officer. There was just a uh news article in Billings, Montana, where an officer uh was engaged in a police action shooting. But they had a manually activated camera. The officer had enough wherewithal that as soon as the shooting was over, he turned the camera on. And caught the aftermath. He did not have time or the presence of mind when it started to activate his camera. The news story wasn't about what happened with the officer. The news story, national news story became. Why didn't the officer turn the camera on before he shot the person? With our system, that will not happen in the city of Winona. That camera will be on, it will be on the officer's body. You will have the evidence to go to court, whether that's criminal or civil, defend your city, defend your officer. Or hold someone accountable for actions outside of policy or the scope of their duties. That is what builds trust and accountability and transparency in a community.
Any other questions?
Any questions from council?
Great, thank you. Eileen?
Hi, I, I have a question, um, Brian. As far as, um, it sounds like a, a good system that, that uh. The devices turn on automatically, what about uh reversing that process, turning them back off? Is that also something that is automated or is that something that happens once the officer like returns to? Uh, the law enforcement center?
Good question. Turning off a camera is not automated. Because a uh police officer, one, you want to catch the video. You don't ever want there to be an opportunity that that video. Gets turned off in the middle of an incident. So turning off the cameras up to the police officer, we have two physical ways of doing it. There's a Bluetooth controller that the officer can push and with our system, and I'm sure the chief can demonstrate uh. When he gets some live camera, so you can tap it. And my camera that I use for demonstration purposes, if I tap my chest on that camera three times, my camera turns on. If I tap it five times, my camera turns off. And that's all set within the system per the chief's policies, per each officer, how many times you tap to turn on and off. But automation is turning on, intentional deactivation is, is turning off. Better safe than sorry when it comes to having the video you need.
Yeah, thank you.
Steve, no. Okay. George.
Uh, does this pick up all voice audio as well too?
Yes. Um, if the camera turns on, you have audio and video 4K.
Thank you.
And the system is set to that an officer cannot deactivate his audio or her audio. On the, on the media controller, you can push a button that as long as you're holding it down, it will mute. But the second you take your finger off of it, it will turn your audio back on. So if you're involved in a situation where you need to have a private conversation, you can mute for that time being. But the second you move your hand away from that controller, it will automatically for the officers, again, so they don't have to think about it, will turn the audio back on. And you will know when you pull the video up, because this is evidence, it's digital evidence. Our system is a complete digital evidence management system. You will know when watching the audio, if it's muted. Which officer muted that video and the duration they muted it for and then that they muted it through their um media controller.
Thank you, Brian. George, go ahead.
Uh, now, while this is going on, is the video cam in the car constantly running?
Yes, if the uh video camera in the car uh gets activated, and again, that can be activated by a push button by the officer in the back of the front camera. Uh, manually, and it also gets activated by the triggers which are run through the Rocket Outee modem in the car. It's connected to OBD ports that uh connect to switches in the car that turn the camera on for you. So again, like if I hit my light bar and the chief's policy says anytime I activate the light bar, I want the in car camera to be on. That camera will turn on. It's got a speed sensor in it. If the chief says anytime one of my cars goes over sixty five miles an hour. I want that dash camera on, that camera will turn on. If you slam on your brakes as if you're getting into an accident. That camera will turn on. If you get into an accident, that camera will turn on. And it also has pre-record that will give you video that shows what led up to that accident occurring.
Thank you, Brian. I, I have a couple of questions regarding the, the tech aspects of it. What? What Bluetooth communication protocol are you using on these?
Ralph, I think it's time for you to kick in.
There we go. Hi, Ralph.
You know, IT speaks its own language and if.
I hear you. I deal with this stuff at work, so I, I've got a few questions.
Okay.
Ralph, are you, there you go.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. So uh, because we're rapidly moving technology at all times. Um, whatever the latest and greatest Android uh protocol is on that device is the protocol that we'll use. So um, I'm not even sure what we're on right now. Uh. I think the last one, last one I checked was three point one.
Okay. And then uh another question regarding that. In terms of future proofing it, I'm, I'm assuming that firmware is uploadable?
Absolutely. So everything is up, uploaded on the fly. So if uh policy changes. And we have to change the configuration on the devices, uh, it's, it's simply done online and pushed out to all the cameras automatically.
Wirelessly. Okay. So they don't have to be plugged in in the office to get.
No.
Uploaded.
There's no docking with our system at all. So when an officer does have an incident. Uh, while they're videoing that incident, it's actually uploading to the cloud. So if you have a critical incident and somebody needs to watch that video quickly. Uh, they have access to it immediately after they uh stop that video.
Okay. And then uh in regards to security uh of these devices and, and the, the data that's on them. What kind of encryption are you using?
Uh, I'm not sure uh what, what the encryption protocol that's being used. We uh transfer all, everything to the AWS gov site. So it's completely CEGIS compliant in all aspects.
Okay, so it is a government site?
Yes.
A government cloud? Okay.
Yes.
Yes, it is, it is the federal government CEGIS Amazon Web Cloud that, so it, it's the same encryption FBI CIA is using to store all their video data. In the cloud. It's encrypted on its way up to the cloud. It's copied twelve times. So you have twelve copies of it in the cloud. And then when it is pulled back down to be evidence or to be viewed, it is re-encrypted on the way back down.
Okay, and then those twelve storage spots, are they, do they, uh, do you have different? Do you know if they're using different servers for each of those twelve recordings?
No, it would have to be.
And then lastly, um, I know some forensic uh developers. That would love to get their hands and hack into stuff like this. What is security? What's the history? Have, have there been any?
We haven't had any instances of anybody hacking any video whatsoever.
Okay.
And, and we can enhance our security on the backend. So there's a number of different layers that you can do. Uh, to actually log into the uh software to access the, the videos. But without, without a login, you cannot get the videos.
Okay. Very good. I think that's all I have. Pam, you have a question? Uh, another council member has a question. Pam?
Yes, I'm concerned about sound quality. Uh, you're saying that this iPhone uh camera is inside a, a pocket. Uh, what kind of microphones do you have so that you can really clearly hear what's going on? I know that if my phone is inside a shirt or inside a pocket, it.
And you butt dial someone?
Yeah, really. Well, not that, but it's just uh, it, it doesn't come through very quickly, clearly. Do you have better microphones than the average cell phone?
Well, it, it's actually the same exact cell, cell phone microphones that everybody uses. Uh, and in fact, having it inside of the uniform actually provides uh like a windsock. So our microphones aren't sitting right up against fabric like you would if you had it in your pocket. Or you would get that constant rubbing back and forth. The microphones aren't actually touching the fabric. The, the device is in a holster that kind of holds it away from that fabric. Uh, no, and if, if somebody is running, then you're gonna, you're definitely gonna capture that. But you can still capture the sound around uh as well.
If, if you would like to see a good example of our cameras in use in the real world. Uh, during a critical incident, uh, you'll be able to see video quality, sound, uh, you'll be able to observe the redaction on it. My alma mater, the Indianapolis Police Department, puts every single critical incident their invol- officers are involved in on YouTube. You just go to YouTube and search Indianapolis Police Critical Incident and you'll see those. It, it is a very. Graphic example of, of what happens, one in police work, but the quality of our cameras, the quality of the audio. And it also shows transparency, what a city can do to show its community. to show its community what its officers are doing, because they put the stuff on YouTube within a week or two after, say, a police action shooting, it's on YouTube. It eliminates questions, it eliminates distrust, it eliminates problems for the police officer themselves. It's really good examples. So if you want to see what we have to offer, what you'll be getting, YouTube, Indianapolis Police Department Critical Incidents.
Thanks, Brian. Chief Williams, I have a couple of questions. Brian had talked a little bit about some of the options. What are the options that so far you've chosen to go with? Sounds like there's a holster activation. What are, I'm assuming they wanted to sell you the whole kit and caboodle, but-
Actually, that's one of the things with Body Worn that we found, that they're a complete package, they're not an à la carte. So Bluetooth is $100 a person, car activation is $100 a car and this type of thing. When you buy Body Worn, you buy Body Worn, you get the in-car, you get the Rocket, you get the setup, you get the training, you get the cloud, you get the redaction, you get the entire complete package, which is not necessarily true with all of them. The triggers that Brian has mentioned are things that we can set on our end of what we want to do. As Brian mentioned, we have a CAD interface that we selected, which is computer-aided dispatch. We could set up a geofence around a location, so if we have a domestic at 123 Main Street, we can set up the geofence that'll be a block radius around that, so when the officer drives in and hits that geofence, the cameras come on. We can also do it the opposite direction. So if an officer's going home to eat, we set that geofence up to make sure that the camera does not activate, so when they're sitting at their kitchen table, talking to their family or something to that effect, the camera doesn't pop on and start filming what's going on in the officer's house during their personal time. So we purchased that pack, or we're going to use that integration as well. Again, as Brian mentioned, the speed sensor, the door, the trigger, the holster brake, if you will.
Light bar?
Light bar, yep, that's actually in our in-car system right now. The in-car also has pre-record that we have set to a minute pre-record, so if you have an accident and that camera gets activated, it goes all the way back a minute, and then you can see what happened. And we've got a great example of that that happened many years ago during the winter, and the officers were traveling down Mark Street westbound, and a bicyclist, I'm sorry, the other way, the officers were traveling northbound on Huff Street, came across railroad tracks approaching Mark, and there was a bicyclist in the middle of the winter, traveling westbound at like 2:00 in the morning, and this is when the snowbanks were probably about this high, and the bicyclist went right smack through the stop sign, never slowed down, never nothing. Car hit it, the officer had the sense to flip on the light, and you could see clear that the bicyclist never hesitated, never stopped, rode full speed through the stop sign and was hit by the vehicle. So the pre-record is helpful for that. The Body Worn Camera, though, we are, again, working through our policy, deciding whether or not we want pre-record on the body camera. Being in the squad car is a little bit different than having it on your body itself. So if I'm eating dinner again and I'm talking, we don't have the geofence up or something, or I'm sitting in the squad room at the police department, we're talking about maybe a prior call, and all of a sudden, I get up because I've got something going on and my camera activates, now is that conversation that was taking place prior to the other call privy to this call. So we're working through that, and I think we're kind of looking at the standpoint of the pre-record will not be on the body camera, but it will be in the squad car.
Okay. And then what officers are you planning on wearing these? Are we doing investigators?
Everybody.
Okay.
Myself included.
Okay. Cool.
Eileen?
I have a policy question, chief. So as you're getting ready for this technology and deciding, you know, when do these come on, and what are the automations that are set up? How does that get decided? Is that, how does that work? Who's deciding?
It's really, it's process. So we're working with, and again, you got to love government, because everything's an acronym, right? FBI, DEA. So we're working with the Body Worn Camera Training and Technology Association, or something to that effect. And so we're working with them. We actually just finished a draft policy, and how we do that is we look at Dakota County, we look at Hastings, we look at the Winona County Sheriff's Department, we look at any samples that they provided us, we look at the League of Minnesota Cities for, you know, the state of Minnesota. We look at all the policies that are available, and then we kind of drill or mold down to what we think works for the city of Winona and the citizens of Winona. What works in Minneapolis probably doesn't work in Winona. What works in Winona may not work in the city of La Crescent. So we kind of mold it and make it our own. We actually just submitted our policy to the Body Worn Training people, and they have a checklist to go through to make sure that, you know, do you meet state statute, do you meet this criteria? And they go through and score it, and then on April 20th, we're having a discussion with them as to whether or not the policy is where it should be. Ultimately, we're going to have another public comment period prior to the implementation and rollout, where we're going to have our draft policy out for the public to look at. They have the opportunity to comment on it. I did send a copy of the policy to Mike Flaherty, who we work with for the city attorney's office for his review as well. And ultimately, we crafted and molded to what's going to be acceptable for the police department and also for the community.
George, you have another question?
Yeah, just one quick one, chief. Now, let's say if an officer has a camera, and two officers, and let's say they're involved in something for a couple hours, are those cameras then, like, taking out of service to record stuff, or how was all that done?
Brian kind of touched on it a little bit, that they're actually always uploading.
Okay.
So the other very neat function for this is I can be sitting at my desk at the law enforcement center, and the officers could be in a critical incident, and I can actually notify the officers, it will vibrate and tell them that I'm going to look at the video. And I can actually see what the officer's seeing at the time. Same thing with like a vehicle pursuit. If the supervisor is in the office and he hears the officers get into a vehicle pursuit, they can log in and pull that vehicle pursuit up and see exactly what the officer's seeing and say, you know, you need to terminate the pursuit, there's too much traffic, or the weather isn't good enough, or the person's driving too erratically. So as they're recording, it's uploading, I can see it, you know, basically not immediately, but very, very quickly, a second to two seconds afterward, it's actually happening.
Wow.
Yeah.
If we would eliminate crime, how many millions of dollars would we solve or save?
I could probably retire, George. Eileen?
I think you may have talked about this at the last meeting when we discussed this a little bit, but, so if the footage is uploading all the time and someone at the station is reviewing it, is, because it's on the servers that, like Brian talked about, so it's not something that someone can cut parts out of or delete it?
Correct.
Okay.
And there's the trade-off on that, because obviously, if there's something that's sensitive or private that the officer has, you know, it's on there. So then that would go back to the permissions of who's allowed to see that administratively. You know, the administrator can see the other officer's video, but not every officer can see every other officer's video. So if Councilman Young had a video and you had a video, you wouldn't be able to see Councilman Young's or vice versa, unless for a certain situation, we gave, we granted those permissions. So it's permissions-based.
Okay, I think we're going to wrap it up. Thank you, gentlemen, on Zoom for helping out this evening, give us some information. Chief Williams, obviously, thanks for all the work you've been doing on this.
Thank you.
And we're going to convene in about one minute here.